Well, I guess we can get started. I don't know if anybody's here representing Grove Engineering.
Oh, Tyler Ollie is the potential property owner for the Hunt subdivision.
Okay, I thought it said the Hunt residence.
Yes, Lisa Hunt is my girlfriend.
Oh, okay.
I'm just kind of like taking over for it.
Okay, so you're going to be presenting tonight or informally?
Yes, I was just hearing, you know, I just wanted to make some submission just to see whether towns had any questions or concerns about the project.
Okay, so there's not going to be anybody from Grove Engineering?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the August meeting of the Rush Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the July 21 minutes. And I'll ask the members if they have any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes.
I did not.
Okay, I had a number of them. I can start unless I got the wrong copy. But after the attendance or attendees, it says Chairman Felson opened the June Planning Board meeting. It should be July Planning Board meeting. And then down at the bottom, under application 2020-07P, there's a sentence that reads, "There is no anticipated change in traffic, one additional vehicle." That should be removed. I don't know where that came from. On the next page, it says Chairman Felson directed the Smith family and architect to obtain a building permit from the building inspector Lembeck. I said a building permit for a possible addition to their house instead of an accessory apartment. But that was basically up to the Smith family. I wasn't directing them. I just said that they could contact the building inspector to see if they could build a possible addition to their house instead of the accessory apartment because they didn't have enough square, their lot wasn't the proper size, et cetera. Or didn't have the correct acreage. On page three, there's, or on my page three, there's a number of bullets regarding Todd's review. And the last bullet says final drawings should be certification. It should be changed to certified and signed by licensed land surveyor after any revisions. So change certification to certified. Page four, first paragraph, Chairman Felson motion to waive the final subdivision hearing. Subdivision is one word, not hyphenated. And then next to the last paragraph, it says Chairman Felson noted that he will send out documents for the planning board, the documents regarding proposed zoning law changes to the accessory apartments and the corresponding affidavit. Are there any other changes or addition or corrections?
I have just one minor one. I think it's application 2020-07P, the one that was rescinded. It says application withdrew. Probably should say application withdrawn.
Okay. Any others? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended or corrected?
I shall move.
All in favor, if you'd raise your hand.
abstain.
So shall I let the record show that John Morelli, Scott Strach, and myself approved the minutes? Okay, so the first informal tonight is the subdivision layout for proposed residence at 517 Rush, West Rush Road. But in essence, that's the address, but the entrance to the house is off of Route 15. And one of the questions I have of the owners is, is this part of a larger or former subdivision, part of Gear Farm subdivision?
No, that was from the late 90s. The gears or the current owners of it is my girlfriend's grandmother. And we're just, you know, looking to build our first home. This isn't going to be a part of a larger subdivision of the rest of the property.
No, I understand that, but is the land that you're going to build on a part of the former Gear Farm?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so the name of it should probably, since there were numerous lots divided out of the the land, the farmland there, this is an additional section of the subdivision.
Yes, it's a little further south. You can see like the top left corner, northwest side of the of the design. Those two parcels are the leftovers or the very southern end of the Gear subdivision.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is that this, the name should be section such and such of the Gear subdivision. I don't know if it's a section two lot, you know, section two lot one, section three. I went on the tax rolls and tried to find this the other day, but I couldn't find, I found some of the Gear Farm.
Yeah, I actually have all of the original documentations from that subdivision. And I'll be happy to provide it if needed.
Well, I would just say that the name should reflect that this is part of, is a new section of the Gear Farm or subdivision.
Will do.
Okay, also, I want, I know you're proposing the house well. How close is public water to the property?
I did not see any hydrants within I site or even up to Rush, Rush, West Rush Road. So I do not believe it's accessible.
Okay, I thought there are some houses on West Henrietta Road or Route 15 that are on public water. That the water main ends, I'm not sure where, how far south it goes on West Henrietta Road. But of course, if public water is available, we would suggest and require you to tie into public water.
Of course.
Also, with this subdivision, since the overall land is, you're breaking, the overall land's about 60 acres. And you're breaking out a, about a three acre parcel?
Yes.
Or 2.99 acres. So you're going to have to, or your land surveyor is going to have to show the other, all of the land. I don't know what Todd, what scale can they use? I mean, you're breaking out three acres out of a 60 acre parcel.
60 acre, probably 100 scale would be fine.
Okay.
Your surveyor, your engineer, all these things John's telling you, he can include on the final site plan you submit. And he wants to tell you, we want to see all the lands, the total holdings, but then the piece you break off in the subdivision. And then the rest would be not approved for building.
Yeah, and that is going to need to be labeled on the remaining lands. The 56.93 acres is going to have to be labeled as not approved for building.
Yes, of course.
And then just show your joiner tax account, you know, names and numbers all the way around. It's on the checklist, but, and you can call who if you have questions or he can, whoever.
Yeah, and there's a number of, the town has standard notes that you can get from the Shelley, the deputy town clerk, the standard notes that'll need to be added to the subdivision drawing.
Okay.
How long is the proposed driveway off of West Henrietta Road?
Roughly 800 feet. Or probably about 900 if once you count the curve. You can see the one.
Don, maybe you can help me with this, but probably it would be a good idea to have a turnout for emergency vehicles halfway between where the entrance on Route 15 and the end of the driveway.
Some.
Pardon?
At some point, that'd be a good idea, either halfway or at the end. That's, we were, towards the end, that's we were planning and having the turnaround there.
No, not a turnaround, a turnout. So that, first of all, in case there was a fire there or something and fire trucks had to, one fire truck had to get by another fire truck or an ambulance or whatever. They could go, the one fire truck could go onto the turnout or emergency, what's it called, Don?
It's like a pad.
Pull off, yeah, just a little pull off off the edge of the driveway.
Right.
You know, so they could pull off, wait and then continue.
Okay, so it's a turnout and then on you to halfway, got that?
Do you have any questions of us? Well, let me turn it over to John Morelli if he has any questions or concerns.
Oh, I'm looking, you know, I'm trying to find, we had paperwork on this sent to us, is that correct?
Yes, well, no, just basically the map. This is just an informal sketch plan for this proposed lot.
Okay, but I guess I don't, I'm seeing you move paper around and I'm looking through my papers to see what I'm supposed to have here.
Yeah, it's called, it's Grove Engineering out of Naples, New York. And the title is subdivision sketch layout, proposed Hunt residence.
Well, talk among yourselves. I'm going to look.
Scott?
Do we typically want to see it electrical as well where that line comes in?
Okay, yeah, we're planning on having, you know, the electric pole at roadside there and going underground and having the transformer.
And is that, that 2.98 acres includes that whole driveway area?
Yes.
Okay, was there an application in with this?
No, this is just a sketch plan, informal discussion, John.
Okay.
There's no hearing or anything.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but on the agenda, it said application 2011, 2020-11P. Yeah, is that correct?
Shelley, did they file any paperwork with the plan?
No, it was just the sketch layout, but I thought I had to give it a name.
Oh, okay, yeah, next time it'd be helpful to have the name of the applicant or the something. You know, that it says sketch layout on it, but yeah, I was looking for the application. I couldn't find it.
John, do you have any, Morelli?
I do not believe I do.
Don?
I believe that water goes on West Henrietta Road as far as like Rick Wizard's house. So they should be able to tap into public water. It would have to be bored under the, under the street. I can't think of anything else if they're going to show the electric underneath the ground and, you know, where their water is in the septic system and, you know, that sort of stuff. Being informal.
Yeah, we have this, we have the septic laid out. We've already done a deep hole and perk test for that and have the sizing requirements needed. We've been in contact with Monroe County Health and have approval or have recommendations from them. And yes, we do still show the electric service. And we'll be sure to show the water service, you know, if the public water is available.
Okay, and all the information regarding the Monroe County Department of Health regarding these sewage treatment or wastewater treatment system will need to be shown on the plans also.
Yes, of course.
And they have, of course, numerous details and notes that they're going to want to add to the plans.
Site distances on the driveway?
We do not have that in there, but I know it's well over the required minimums. It's pretty flat out there.
Okay, so we'll just need to see what it is and what the minimums are on the plan.
Yep, of course.
I do have a couple of questions. One is on the leach field. This is not a raised bed, the leach field, is it?
Yeah, it's, so we had seepage at 26 inches and Monroe, can't remember his name off the top of my head. But he just said we needed one foot of fill.
Time making out the elevation, but it looks like the way you have it draining graded, water will run off right onto the top of the leach field unless it's elevated.
That's showing the tapers off the side. You have to have at least like a two foot taper off the side of your bed.
So what I'm looking at here.
It's parallel, John, to the contours, and I don't think they've done any preliminary grading yet for the site itself, but because there's no trenches around it or anything that I can see, yeah.
You know, we just.
Yeah, you're just showing it in the concept.
Yes, yeah, like I said, we know the size and shape.
Point being, it has to be graded so it's not going to run on to the leach field area. The other question, do we have a minimum length of a driveway before we require a turnout?
I thought it was, I'm not sure, John. I don't.
880 feet is pretty lengthy, so I would, I would think so, but I wasn't sure if we had a cutoff point or something.
No, we talked about a turnout. He's going to add one.
Okay, all right, then, no comment.
Scott, did you have any additional?
No, I'm okay.
Todd?
Just, you'll have to obviously have all your erosion and sediment control measures in place. Doesn't look like you'll need a full sweep. You'll be under the threshold for disturbance, but definitely have your, with the hill in the back around the house here.
Yeah, with the slope there, we'll definitely need silt fenced.
No, John, I don't have really anything else.
Okay, Amber?
No, I'm good, thank you.
John Mancuso?
No comment.
Tyler, do you have any other questions for us?
No, not at the moment. I think we covered everything. I was, you know, I was concerned about public water there, but if it is available, no, we will tie into it. You know, other than that, I just wanted to see if you guys had any major concerns or questions about the project, but seems like we've covered everything. So we'll probably be making formal submission sooner.
Okay, you know, your application, in order to get on the following month's planning board, the application has to be in by the 10th of the preceding month?
Yes, so if I have them before September 10th, we'll be on October's planning board.
Correct.
Yep. Other than that, I got nothing else. I appreciate you doing.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is just the informal discussion with Christian Forefront. And Chris and I talked yesterday as I sent out information that Amber had sent me regarding the town board's seeker determination and a 16-page statement of findings and the resolution forming the solar energy overlay district. So now it's going to be coming to the planning board for a special permit and site plan approval for the actual layout of the solar farm. Our Jeff Warner is the forefront. So this is, Christian, if you could explain where you are in the process. I know there was a little, between Amber and I and John Mancuso and so forth, and the planning board members haven't seen this yet. But back in, I want to say, and I looked at the emails, maybe March or April, you sent to the, a colored simulation, visual simulation of, of the, I think the existing proposed screening. And maybe, I don't know if there were any, I know Todd, you reviewed it and asked for some additional.
Yeah, we walked, we walked the projects back, you know, months ago with Christian and with Jeff. We looked at everything, we, in the field, we actually decided on what we would want to see for screenings. This was after we had discussed it, I think, at the planning board, you know, we all decided to go out and take a look. They brought back a proposal with some visualizations. I wrote a letter and commented on some of those. They went back and did some additional homework and things we asked them to look at, including the special unique area, which was kind of adjacent across the street, the Red Oak, I believe it is. And they came back with what we believe to be, yes, satisfactory. We did ask them to include that on a site plan, but not sure if we ever got the final, you know, layout of the site plan and everything else. That was one thing that I had asked for too. But that's basically, I think, where we are, and now they'll bring this to this board to look at and review and see if you're basically in agreement. I know John explained in detail that the town board's efforts were to, and with the developers and this, you know, to get us to a point, went through all the secret process. So the plan is basically was, I don't know what the proper phrasing is, John can jump in here, but they have a plan that was basically approved. So we don't believe there'll be any drastic changes to that plan, but you'll have the opportunity to look at it. And obviously, the board will review from their, all their aspects from the planning side. But we had extensively gone through, you know, obviously, all the seeker was approved and done, and visualizations were part of that process.
Okay, but in my phone conversation with Chris yesterday, there's been no changes to the original site plan or plans that the planning board had from April, or excuse me, October 31st of 2019. Chris said that they have not completed a landscape plan because they are waiting for the town planning board to act on the site plan and what additional screening, if any, we would, we would require regarding the site plan approval and special permit. So tonight is just an informal to, in case any of the board members want to know where we are in the process. I also told Chris yesterday that I would see if we could set up a workshop meeting within a couple of weeks. I'm proposing September 1st. I know John Morelli can make that. I don't know if the other planning board members or Amber or John Mancuso can make that meeting. But it would be two weeks from today in another Zoom, well, I'm presuming another Zoom. But we would go over, and I would send out what Amber has sent to me. There's been a number of report, well, number of reports. There's the decommission report that Forefront has submitted. And I think you, John Mancuso and Todd have reviewed that and made comments back to Forefront. And also, the geotechnical report has been submitted. Now, Chris, maybe you can, have there been other reports submitted? And I haven't had a chance, I did print out the seeker, the town board resolution and the seeker statement of findings, but I haven't read it yet.
Yeah, the other, thank you, Chairman Felson. The other report that I believe was submitted and Todd and his firm commented on was the stormwater management plan, the SWIP, that was also submitted. I think that's available on the website. So really, what I was hoping for this evening was to get a little bit of clarity on what the town would require with regard to the landscape plan and screening. I think that's one of the largest items that still needs to be developed here on the site plan for approval. And yes, you know, we were able to submit some simulations and then a second round of simulations based on the town board's requests as well as Todd's requests. But I don't recall receiving or understanding exactly what is required to be included with regard to the simulations and not necessarily needed to be included. So I'm looking for some clarity from the town with regard to that. So we can take some steps in beginning the development of that plan, of the screening plan and planting choices as far as species of trees. So I guess that's really the, I was hoping for this evening, to get a better understanding there as well as any other deliverables that the planning board may require at this point that we could start working on on our end.
Okay, Todd, but you have, you have reviewed all this information, Todd?
Yeah, all the, all the items that were submitted through Seeker, both my, I have reviewed with John in tandem, separately and together. I think what we need now is to develop the formal site plan, and you guys can take a look at, I would start with what he has today. And then obviously, like you said, he needs to develop the landscaping plan. But I would start with just looking at what he has, hasn't changed boundary wise. I don't think the footprint has changed. I don't believe the entrance road has changed. Everything seemed acceptable to code. I don't believe he needed any variances or anything like that. So really, it was visualization were more to understand for the board members and the public what he was proposing and how it would be screened. Now we can get down to the nitty gritty of, you know, planting details, species, all that kind of stuff. Honestly, I recall, I think it was pretty, you know, Amber's on too, she may have a comment. But I think there was one area that we thought might need to be, you know, embellished, you know, a little bit more along the, if you're looking at the site, the left side. But, but overall, I thought, you know, I'll let the board. But, but overall, I thought, you know, I'll let the board, I won't speak for the board, but you guys can take a look at what we have, the limits of what he has. That's what I wanted on the plan, how far it was going up the sides and things like that.
Okay, but Todd, you're talking about the October 31st, 2019 drawings that we have.
They should be pretty similar. Yeah, he may have an additional one site plan that he's added and enhanced with plantings and the one that he did for the locations of the visualizations. But everything else I believe is the same. Christian, is that, as far as I know, I'd have to go back to my notes and look at the.
Todd, this is, Todd, this is Amber. I recall we asked for more along the southern boundary and then the visualization from 390. I think we had a question on, and then the north side, it was going back as I think as far as the barn was. And we were physically out there and we all agreed on those. And then the pictures came out.
Okay, but nothing, Chris, nothing has been, what Amber just said, what Todd just said, nothing's been put on paper regarding what they're talking about. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. Um, and, and I, I just haven't received anything from the town as far as specifically uh, what would be needed as far as additional screening based on the original site plan that was provided. And that's the same site plan that the planning board had originally looked at as well.
So this is John. If I could just, uh, if I could take a step back and just sort of talk about where we were and where I think the, the board sounds like it's going in terms of clarifying the plans. The initial application before the town board in terms of what we called the site development plan was, was essentially in sum and substance containing much information as you would see on a, on an actual site plan application. It referenced the code sections dealing with that and contained a fair amount of information to allow for both the planning board and the town board to review, uh, that iteration of plan in conjunction with the first phase of review. Um, Christian, if you look at section, um, subsection 18, uh, well, excuse me, 20B, which is on page 10 of the solar law, you'll see effectively the site plan approval section is supposed to, uh, the, the planning board gets their site plan application materials plus, uh, an additional nine items that are set forth in the code, one of which have, is also the landscaping of the site and screening vegetation and structures. In addition to the general, uh, provision of the code that deals with the complete screening, um, uh, requirement, which is contained on page six, uh, subsection 10, uh, there. And the planning board under that section is the board that effectively will review in conjunction with its site plan review authority, the screening that would be proposed for the site to determine the adequacy of the screening, to determine, um, whether there's, uh, any waivers of minimum screaming, screening, if there's other feasible vegetation or other features. And so if you look at those two sections, um, those will probably be the guiding factor for the planning board and for you in terms of what deliverables you'll need to give to them, uh, to satisfy them, uh, from a site plan standpoint. Cause the, the plant, the town board did have obviously a, a site development plan before it. But its focus was on seeker and the overlay rather than the actual, um, uh, drill down on the configuration of the site and the actual screening, which is under the planning board jurisdiction.
So, um, Victoria, can I share the screen here? Okay, so, um.
You got it?
Yep. So this is, uh, I believe what John was talking about, section 19 and 20.
Yep, yep.
See this right? Uh, so basically, basically this to me says, hey, um, to approve for a special permit, you have to follow the rules set forth and, you know, in the law for a special permit. And with site plan approval, there are some additional considerations. So these have to be, these have to be followed. I guess what I'm looking for at the planning board, I mean, you've been through all of this thus far and, and, and done a lot. But really I think we need to see a standard, uh, uh, application for a special permit and site plan. Uh, and then the attachments could be pieces that you've worked out with the town board, but we, I, I'm feeling that it's, I, I'm a piece of something that's bigger than me. It involves the town board, involves the planning board, it involves a, a number of different things. And I don't see how we're going to progress sensibly in any, in, in, in any way unless we, at this point, say, town board section is done, the overlay is approved. Now you're coming to the planning board for a special permit. And John Mancuso, jump in here.
I, I, I agree with you, John. I was going to say, I think what, what you, what you said makes sense. I think, Christian, I know, and if I misstate something, cause it's been a long, there's been about a year's worth of documents filed, but I believe you submitted at some past date, the physical application form, uh, for site plan and special permit, the actual application document that, that the town has as its form. And I think what John Morelli is saying is it might make sense for you, Christian, to sort of repackage what you make, what, what you need to submit to the town, to the planning board so that it has a application. You know, the application document, the site plan, any other materials that are attachments there too, so that the, the board has now what it must review under these sections, um, you know, as to be supplemented by the code. Is that, John, effectively what you were?
Yes, yes. And, and, uh, you know, in addition, could, could, now, uh, I'm not sure what you can see, but can you see this Town of Rush Planning Board Resolution? Yes?
Yep, I can see it.
So I don't know if this has been passed on to the applicant, but this is the report and the resolution that the planning board made to the town board in response to its first review of, of the application. And, you know, a lot of these things, is it a permit use in the site with overlay? Yes. Has it, uh, yes, yes, yes. But there were some that we had questions on. Is the system 12 feet or less above the ground? It was at that point for us unclear in the application. So we'd be looking to make sure these highlighted things were addressed. You know, is the system designed to allow agricultural use? That was unclear in the original application. Will landscape buffer be provided? Uh, only partially, uh, expansion of landscaping buffer and two-year warranty and maintenance are needed. So I don't know, uh, I don't know if you guys have this, we could forward it to you. It's helpful. Cause I know some of this you've probably gone over with the town board, uh, but at the same time, these are things that we're interested. So, uh, Christian, I don't know, uh, this would be helpful to you, but something I'd be happy to provide. Then in addition to that, you know, we did talk about, uh, we did talk about alternate, um, oops, alternate screening, buffering. Well, we talked about this at, at our meeting. You could see it. We blow it up. Basically saying that these were areas where we thought, uh, passive buyers could see the site and that would need to be screened. And we offered a couple of suggestions. Uh, one was taking what you had already, uh, already proposed and added a southern boundary and northern boundary and a small piece over here somewhere along there to block the road from 390. Uh, this was another alternative that I think Jeff expressed some interest in. But I mean, these are types of things that we've put out there. You've been on the site with the, with the town board and, and town engineer, and so you have their inputs. I would say that what I would like to see coming back from you is, you know, having heard this from the planning board, having heard what you heard from the, the, uh, the town board and town engineer and your site visit that you, uh, put together a proposal you think would be, would be adequate to, uh, to, you know, protect the visual impacts and, uh, and so on. So I don't know, I could go on for a while, but I'll, I'll stop there and, and hope that, uh, you got some kind of idea of what I'm thinking.
Yeah, John, that's very helpful. Thank you for, for that. Also, that resolution, um, I'd have to dig to see if I have that available unless it's on the town website and I can pull it off of there. If not, uh, if that could be forwarded to me, uh, then I can certainly use that as also the guideline with our consultants to help develop and answer those questions that are still outstanding.
I believe it is on the website. Um, I think John Morelli, January 2020, I think was when it was adopted. The report?
Sounds right. Um.
It should be.
I buried it. Oh, here, let's see. There's something up on top. Resolve January 21st, 2020.
Okay. Yeah, check that 2020 on the Ecode portion of the site, Christian. I think it's been posted there. And if not, uh, we certainly, we can shoot a copy over to you.
All right. Yeah, I'll take a look first there, John, and then if I'm having trouble, I'll let you know.
Okay. Yeah, don't, don't hesitate.
And then in addition, I'll, um, I'll reference the subsection 20B and 10 on those two pages. We'll go through that checklist and again, make sure that, um, you know, we're, we're in compliance with those requirements and include those deliverables and then resubmit the application package that includes those. Um, so this gives me, um, you know, some, some guidance here on next steps. And that's really what I was looking for this evening in this informal discussion. So I do appreciate it. If there's, if there's anything further, I'm happy to listen to it.
Yeah, I would say, well, I would say that the special meeting, uh, workshop is probably, you're probably not going to have that information to us in time. Or I, I was looking at two weeks. I mean, we, we, we do have you on the agenda for September.
Okay. Well, I, I think I agree with you, um, Chairman Felsen. So let me, let me start tomorrow with our consultants and start to put this package together. And prioritize, if I have any questions, I can certainly circle back. But I think everything's pretty straightforward from what I've heard tonight. And, uh, let me, let me start to put this together and we'll get it prepared and ready for the September, I mean, yeah, for the September meeting.
My, I have a question on procedure, Chairman Felsen. In terms of the workshop, um, are, are you, cause we'll have to, we'll notice everything and I'll work with the deputy clerk to do that. Um, are you anticipating, uh, wanting to hold the meeting with or without deliverables from the applicant or is the sort of contingent?
Okay, maybe, no, I, I said the workshop would probably, we're not going to have the workshop.
Okay.
Cause I don't think, even if Kristen got everything back to us, we're not going to have time to review it. So we miles away to September.
Okay.
Unless, unless we get, get it all back very soon and then we could possibly do it earlier, but I know it's been, it's been a very long process, Christian, and.
Yes, it has, but, um, understandable. And, you know, as soon as we have, I have any, any of these deliverables available and this package together, I'll submit it, um, as, as quickly as I can for your, your review. And if there's time before that, uh, September meeting, uh, and it makes sense to have a workshop, then we can talk about that. If not, then we wait until the September meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, not on this project. I have another.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I just, again, I, I had it and then I, I had too many things open here. I buried it. I had a, uh, sample agenda that we had had in the past and it basically had the, uh, the name of the, uh, oh, maybe this is it. Let's see. Yeah, if I could, if I could just share the screen again. Okay. And I, I put that up there for Shelley. Having something like this for, uh, for an agenda that has not only the number, but, you know, brief description or the name would be, would be helpful. I was just, I was, I was looking for that stupid application form. But this gives me the name and what's going on. So I have a better idea what I'm looking for. So if that's not too much trouble, I would, uh, ask that we do the agendas like that. That's okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's all I had.
Anything else?
Well, should we talk about the accessory apartment zoning law rewrite?
Well, funny you should ask. I wasn't going to because, uh, John Mancuso and I had a call this afternoon regarding it. And John is reviewing other sections of the zoning law, namely a two-family, uh, dwelling. And I just brought up a townhouse and, um, we're going to have to get together or see how, or John, John can explain it better probably than I can. But, uh, basically somebody could ask for a two-family, uh, dwelling on a residential lot. And it would require a special permit and site plan by the planning board, but it would not require the additional information and affidavit that an accessory apartment requires. John brought this up today and I, I, I was, uh, I was a little confused at first, but now I, I better understand that there's actually less requirements for a two-family dwelling special permit than there is to, for an accessory apartment. There's more, there's, I don't know, 13 or 14 requirements plus the affidavit for the accessory uh, apartment versus somebody could possibly ask, uh, that a two-family dwelling be constructed on a residential lot. And all that's needed, well, not all that's needed. I mean, uh, needed is a special permit and still site plan approval. But, uh, but there's no affidavit involved, uh, in a two-family dwelling. The owner, the owner, uh, there has to be one owner of both units, uh, both, uh, the two-family dwelling units. But they could, they could lease it out or rent it out. Uh, there's no requirement that it has to be a family member.
Do you have a, a, a section that that's included in this zoning law?
Not, not right in front of me, but it, that there's, all it is, is that it, Scott, it, it's where that, uh, there's the 13 items that were formerly, um, oh.
Under the.
Conditional use permits and they were changed for a special permit. There, there's, it says one two-family residential dwelling or dwelling is, is allowed condition upon the issuance or, or the applicant obtaining a special permit. And the only other, and the only other require, or the only other information there is in the definition of a two-family dwelling. And it's very, it's, it's one sentence.
And, and the applicant being, and the, uh, dwelling of both units being owned by the same individual.
Correct.
Yes. Yep.
But I could, I could build a duplex or a two-family dwelling and, uh, have anybody I want live in the other section as long as I own, from what I understand, as long as I got a, a special permit and site plan approval by the planning board. I could have anybody I want living there. It doesn't have to be a relative. anybody I want living there. It doesn't have to be a relative or a domestic.
You'd have to recuse yourself, John.
Well, yeah, I know that. But, so, that's why I didn't quite bring it up, Scott. We gotta, we gotta look more into what the town really wants to do with the whole zoning code, because it's, it's not only, I mean, I, I, we were almost finalized with the accessory apartment zoning law and the affidavit revisions. But now, and I see the applicant for next month's, that obtain a variance from the zoning board, the Lindsay property up on Stony Brook is, is on the Zoom meeting tonight. And it's possible that at some point, he could have, maybe, I mean, I, I don't know all the legalities, could have converted the house to a two-family dwelling and asked for a special permit and site plan approval and would not have needed to get a variance for the square footage being more than 800 square feet for his proposed accessory apartment. So there's a number of items, John, maybe you can, maybe I'm talking too much.
No, you're, you're, you're right, Chairman Felsen. And for the, for the Lindsay application, since we don't have a new code amendment, a, a new code yet, they need a site plan approval. There's no special permit requirement yet. We sort of use that as an example, just in talking in accessory apartments. If you introduce the special permit requirement, which was the proposal in the modified code, it, it, it just occurred to us in looking through all of the other sections of the code, that we had a situation where the proposed amendments for an accessory apartment would require a site plan and a special permit and, and the, and the 13 or so conditions contained in the section, but a two-family dwelling would just need a special permit and a site plan without those conditions.
And no affidavit.
With no affidavit. And so my, my question was more from a fundamental standpoint is sort of what, as a town, you know, how do you view a two-family versus an in-law apartment if you're now making modifications to the, to the accessory apartment section? And so I, I just brought that to the, to John's attention for, for purposes of allowing the board to kind of discuss that.
I must say, I didn't realize that was in the code. I, I thought I saw something that said residential lot could have only one dwelling per lot.
Right. That, that is true. But with the issuance of a special permit, a two-family, a two-family dwelling can be allowed condition upon the applicant obtaining the special permit and site plan approval by the planning board. It, it's one of those, I don't have the section right in front of me, one of those 13 or 14 items that were all added to the zoning law after the town board did away with the conditional use permit.
Section B to residential units.
Yeah. 120-7, I think.
120-7, R20 residential districts B.
Yep, yep.
Uses permitted upon a special permit.
Yeah, and a two-family dwelling, are two-family is about halfway down? I don't know what-
Number eight.
Okay.
Yeah, number eight.
And, and there is a definition for a two-family dwelling, but it basically says you're gonna have two, two living units or two dwelling units. And then dwelling unit is also defined, you know, what it contains, sleeping, cooking, sanitation, et cetera. But that's, that's it. I mean, there's, so, if the planning board members, we're gonna have to talk, I mean, I, you're gonna have to review this and see how we want to get back to John and the town board. At this point, I would, I don't know how we're gonna use, we could still modify the affidavit, John?
Yeah, I think that the planning board has, yeah, for, for the purposes of the pending applicants, we can still work on modifying just the affidavit to allow the pending ones to be processed. This would be for new people down the road that are applying.
Okay. Any other discussion? Comments?
Am I a comment?
Sure, you can comment.
[laughing]
I know you've gone through, I know you've gone through a lot. Thank you, and I appreciate that. I, I, I just wanted to say thank you for, for hearing us, and I can be a bit persistent, and, and that's, that's probably not a bad thing for my behalf, because it's pushed me way back, and there's a whole lot of circumstance for that reason. But I think I've presented a good plan. We, we have direct access between the two units. What our intention is, is my wife and I were to, to assist my, my children with their, their lives. And yet, there's no, no formal entrance to the new addition. It's not, it's not considered a two-family in that respect. But what, what I'd like to do is, is see that this thing moves along. I, I understand there's other, other in-law apartments in, in the town, so I, I hear your, your pain trying to address this situation. But again, you know, I, I think that the accessory affidavit is a little bit punitive, and it needs to be rethought in terms of everything on it is already covered by town code. Town code directly says you cannot have a two-family house. So if you violate town code, there you go, you're done. What, why would I sign or why would anyone be required to sign a, an affidavit that says, well, guess what, in two-year, three-year years, we're gonna review this and say, can't use your investment anymore, get out. That, that just doesn't sound, it doesn't pass the whole, whole test, if you will. So, so again, you know what, thank you all. I, I hope that, that we can proceed with this thing because it's costing me a lot of money to do it. So with that, I'll let you guys go. Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.